All right, looks like we're, looks like we're on. JJ, are you good to go? You ready?
Yes, oh yeah.
Ted, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anybody not ready? All right, all right. I'll call to order this meeting February, or yeah, February 1st, 2023.
Amazing, isn't it?
It is. Time's flying. Already one month in. Obviously, we're missing Commissioner Herzog. He is on the phone with us. He's not feeling well. John, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll start this meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Our next topic will be amendment and approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have none. No, no agenda items to change or add.
And nor do I. Oh, oh, that's right.
One more for the suicide awareness and prevention.
Do we need to change that?
It's on the consent agenda.
It, I, I'm...
I think we should pull that and just go ahead and quickly add that name.
Okay, so we'll pull, um...
5A?
Five...
Whoops, I'm sorry.
5B. So we'll pull 5B, and let's put that in, uh...
6C, maybe?
Um, yeah, we can do that. 6C.
I don't think we have anybody here that wants to do that.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Kathy Bernhardt with Curry Public Transit. We have a presentation for the transit development plan. I asked Commissioner Herzog if we could add on to that to get the okay's for the different, uh...
Kathy, you better come up to the microphone real quick.
Sorry, not bad.
It's okay?
So we're on, I think it's four, for the transit development plan. But I also asked to be added on for the grant, uh, grant applications for the biennium. So if I could have 10 minutes after that is presented?
Isn't it, isn't that...
It's included.
Isn't that listed? I think it is.
I didn't get a new agenda.
Oh, okay. It says biennium grant application for 20...
Oh, you got it already.
Yeah, my understanding is we're, we're all good on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so we're moving, um...
What are motion on that, to prove the agenda as is?
Yeah, I just want to confirm. We're moving 5B to 6C. Uh, no other, no other items, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move we approve the agenda as amended?
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And so that is approved, JJ? Ted, you gotta put your mic on. All right, and next up is public comments, and I see Don Kendall here, so we'll start with Don.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, I'm just here again to irritate and bother you a little bit more about the, uh, the American Rescue Funds. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Alcorn, for taking a tour around with Council of Fitzgerald. Uh, I hope you saw some interesting things and had good, and I'd still like to take Commissioner Boyce and Commissioner Herzog for a tour through our district. Uh, just want to reiterate again that we are in need of those funds, and we are not stuck by the dollar figure that we've given you on our forms. So if you have a need or a want to change things around, almost any dollar will help because we are strictly funds through sales of water. We do not have a tax base. We do not have any other device to do this. And as we move along, things are getting more expensive, and we're trying to catch up on a lot of things.
I think everybody's feeling that, Don, uh, and I do appreciate your time taking Ted and I out there. That was very informative, uh, learned a lot. Learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a nice day.
All right.
Thank you, Don.
And next up is Susan. Susan, step up and...
Oh, sorry. Oh!
Susan Getz. Susan Getz, I'm sorry.
I went to school with a Getz.
Oh.
You can both come up now.
I'm here to support the rules and the regulations that Curry County has put on for the STRs. If you lower the cost for, you know, for one, two, three, it will create a problem for the ones that have already paid. It supports the city and our condo association.
Thank you, Susan. Any, any, any comments, Commissioner?
No, thank you very much.
All right, I don't see any other requests, so we'll move forward to the presentation. Now it's Susan's turn.
Hi. Good morning.
Morning.
Um, my name is Susan Wright. I am a principal engineer and planner with a firm called Kittleson and Associates. We're, we're consultants, um, and we have been working...
Hang on one moment.
No problem.
Oh. Just taller mouse, Eric.
Right, we'll see how this works. Okay. Um, so I have been working under a contract with Catherine Bernhardt with Curry Public Transit. So it's been a planning contract funded by ODOT to help Curry Public Transit work on their long-range transit plan. And this is related to a topic that Catherine will talk about today as well. So we, we've been working on a, we'll call it more of like a 10-plus-year vision for the transit, for Curry Public Transit, that then helps inform kind of what things should be occurring in the, in the near term. So the plan includes short-term, midterm, and long-term recommendations. And the short-term recommendations really inform Curry Public Transit in what to kind of apply this year for their grant funds. And Catherine will be speaking a little bit more about that. So, so while we've been doing a plan that's been looking at short-term, midterm, and long-term, so we're coming to you to give you a little bit of an overview of the plan, kind of this little bit more of a work session. The plan will be coming back to you for adoption on February 15th, I believe. And we'll make sure that you get a copy that you can review in advance and let us know if you have any other, any questions. But I'll give you a good overview of it today. And then the, the timing of getting this adopted is, um, is important as Catherine is submitting applications for kind of funding for projects for this next, uh, next biennium. So there's, these two things really dovetail together. Questions before I kind of dive in a little bit?
I have one quick question. I, I, this is going to be relatively lengthy, and I see that we've got, we've got, um, oh, did Becky, no, there's Becky. I, if we've got some people in the room, it might be good if we, if we got those action items out of the way so that everybody can go on with their lives, and then, um, I, I think that'd be good.
Good call.
We gotta keep Becky working. We gotta, we gotta keep her working.
Are you, are you comfortable with that, Commissioner?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm sorry to do that, but I just...
Yeah, no, that's no problem.
We promised to bring your screen back up, and is your first name really Susan, too?
It is, yes. But you can call me Suzie. I mostly go by Suzie, so, thank you.
All right, then we'll move forward to Action Item 6A, which is fee reduction for short-term rental fourplex, and Becky Crockett.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald, for allowing me to step up and talk about this first. Essentially, what's before you today is a request for a waiver of fees. The Board of Commissioners is the authority to set fees for the county, including planning fees for the various applications that we take in. And we have a request today for a reduction of fees on a short-term rental. This particular short-term rental has reason to request a fee reduction in that this fee reflects the fact that the rental really is within one dwelling. There is a fourplex that has been retrofitted into one dwelling, and for that reason, it seems appropriate to consider the possibility of reducing the fee from what would be $8,000 for the fourplex, that is $2,000 per short-term rental, down to a flat fee of $2,000. That's the request. Consistent with that request is a reduction in the fee for a variance for parking. Typically, the, the facility is able to accommodate onsite parking for its guests, but our short-term rental requirements do provide for additional parking beyond what is normally typical for a facility like this. So there is a need for this applicant to go through the variance process. We've asked for a fee reduction to the variance process. A variance is $14,500, or $14,000, okay? $1,455, sorry about that. And the free reduction for the variance would be to $500. So the applicant is here, and he is prepared to talk about his reason for requesting this reduction in fees. So with that, unless you have any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Not this time.
All right. Please step up, sir.
Thank you very much for seeing us today.
Pull the mic.
All right, thank you again for seeing us. You know, we, uh, we came to Gold Beach, Oregon, you know, with a little bit different idea in mind than where we're at today. And I won't bore you with the details, but we did buy a building on Doyle Point Road. It's, it's an area that has views. The house that we bought, if, if some of you remember that, you know, before I could even get an inspector out there, we had to tear a building off from, an attachment off from the back of the house. We've also torn an attachment off the front of the house. Anyway, the, the building was in complete disarray, and we've had, I want to say standing ovations, but it's more of a drive-by ovations and clapping from neighbors as we, as we improved the, you know, the neighborhood and the look of the, our contribution, anyway. So I want to say we're just not somebody that's from out of state that has bought a place and turned it over to someone else to manage for them. We're here, and, you know, our true belief is to, you know, of continuous improvement. I know that a lot of the rules are such so that Gold Beach doesn't get a bad reputation for condition of a property or unsafe, or people renting out things that are, are not good. We have had, you know, we have used our place, and, and let me retract a little bit. Our business plan was to get real estate license, general contractor's license. My wife and I work together. My son, once in a while, is involved, but he works for the deputy sheriffs. He's a deputy sheriff. We are here to create an environment where we can bring people to the area, show them real estate, fix up the house when they buy it, and provide temporary housing for them. The only way to do this and have it make sense was to have a rolling short-term rental that we could block out when we have somebody that is coming in for those reasons. It has created flexibility that we have found incredibly useful for other things. You know, we have put up, since we've been doing this, we have put up traveling medical. We have put up the missionaries that you see on Facebook, always looking for service projects. You know, we have put up, uh, when my neighbor passed away, we put his family up when they came into town. We had another neighbor that, more positive note, had a family reunion and had people come into town. We've been able to help out neighbors. Another neighbor who was on her own transformer, and when that transformer blew and the whole valley was, the whole area was out of power, she was going to be the last one to be serviced, and so she came and stayed with us for a little bit while we set her up with a temporary source of power. And so, you know, we're involved in the community, and we're trying to help. We've used our place to try to do what good we could. I know Monica Ward, with your emergency response, put out looking for temporary housing for postal workers and people that were cut off because of the road closure north of us. You know, we responded as quick as we could to her to try to make our place available. These short-term rentals, if they're used right in a, in a community-hearted way, can be, can be a great source, you know, for temporary housing. We have found since we've been here, and I know that our grid, our electrical grid, is pretty sound here in Gold Beach, but when power does go out, a lot of times that wetter burn loop in Doyle Point area still have power. I can't explain it, but, you know, we've gone over to relax and watch TV when where we're staying right now has been out, you know? And so we've also talked to emergency planning people about housing families with little kids because, you know, our major source of heat here is, is electrical. When the power goes out in the middle of the winter, because that's the only time it ever goes out, these are great, these are great potential solutions that I don't think are being looked at because it's, it's more of a STRs are in the scopes for other reasons and, and thought of as negativity. And I'm, and I'm here to tell you, our business plan was to help bring people here as they transition into homes of their own. And, and I think that we're able to do that. I do feel like, you know, for, for my fees to be four times that of the $10 million house and offer that rents for, I think, $2,100 a night because it's one big ginormous place of $2,000, $2,000 fee, you know, I just don't feel like, because we broke it up into smaller segments, this house as a fourplex, what we've done is we've created our ability to, depending on need, you know, block out three units to, to bring a family in, a big family that's looking for a place to, for their own. So it's created for us, our business model is to create that flexibility. And so to have it one place or four places, four places is much easier and makes more business sense to us to have it that way. But should we pay four times as much because we did that? It just was a good business sense, and at the time, there weren't fees for it. We have been in operation for, uh, you know, I want to say about two years, but that's pretty flexible because, you know, like I say, we put up our son when he came here to, to take the job with the Sheriff's Department. We put him up for quite a few months before he transitioned out on his own. And he lives just down the street from, from the short-term rental. Uh, and when people come to stay with us, they know we're close because we stop in all the time and talk to people. Our son is close. We, you know, when, I know worries about partying places, I think that's when there's not an owner onsite or close by. And so we don't have, there are no issues. And when it comes to parking, um, we have a parking stall for everyone and a couple of extras. But do we have an extra for each unit? You know, we don't because that would almost be ridiculous. We have had, I want to say, seven or 800 people stay at our place, 700, 800 stays. In that time, we've had four to five people say, hey, we're bringing in an extra car. Is there a place to park the extra car? And we let them know where it is. We have designated signage on every parking stall there for each unit, plus extras. If somebody's, you know, towing a boat or a trailer, they've got a place, you know, for the extra, extra length. Those are really the biggest reasons why we're asking for, you know, a little bit of a modification.
Okay. Commissioner, comments? Questions?
Yeah. Commissioner Herzog?
Commissioner Herzog, would you like to go first?
Well, I was just gonna ask if what our planning director, Becky Crockett, what her recommendation is on this, and, uh...
Becky, why don't you step up and, and address Mr. Herzog's question?
My recommendation is the applicant in this case has made a really good case for a commitment to the community coupled with the need to have a short-term rental to be able to facilitate that commitment to the community. This is an unusual case. Most of our short-term rental applications, in fact, I would say 95% of them that we've received so far are from people that are out of town. So this is a different situation. As far as the parking commitment, the applicant has also stated to me that if, in fact, parking did become a problem, he would be amenable to looking at purchase of the property next door to make sure that there was expanded parking if necessary. So my recommendation would be to support this request.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Vice Chair Alcorn. Yeah, 8,000 seems like a lot. Mr. Workman, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, I'm gonna ask you just a couple of quick questions. They may even seem a little bit unusual, but it'll make sense. What's the square footage, just approximate on this, number one? On your home or on this building?
On the entire building.
Yeah.
Uh, you know what? It was originally listed at 2,400 square foot, but we, like I say, we tore off a back building and another one. So it may be, I'm not sure if either of those two additions, I think one of them was probably permitted and one was not. We're glad we tore them off because the deck is more valuable to us than a, a storage room that was on top of the deck blocking views for people. It just, but we are, I'd say, maybe around 2,100, 2,200 square feet.
Great, thank you. How many bathrooms?
Um, we needed a bathroom in every one of them, so there are four bathrooms, four kitchens.
Okay. The reason I ask that, Vice Chair Alcorn, is because, um, if you were to transfer or, that wouldn't be, that would maybe be a practical application for a long-term rental with four bathrooms, but in the square footage, I think it really wouldn't be practical for, you know, you know, long-term, being a long-term landlord. So, uh, Director Crockett, I think, really made a case, and I think we're going to be getting more of these. And it might be good for the board to consider going on a case-by-case basis when we have or need variances or have, uh, short-term rental landlords or property owners that would want to do a, an appeal on this. But yeah, my, my base, my basic concern here is 8,000 is a tremendous fee. And, well, I, I did have one more question for Director Crockett, if I may. In some of our previous conversations, you've made the point, you know, that where, where the motel's going to be, and it's a different zoning thing, so if we had condominiums or something like that, that, you know, they could, they could come to the same conclusion that they should get a discounted fee, uh, you know, they're still... Are they part of, there's just so many questions that we could answer. Are they, are they part of the community? Are they long-term, and what are they contributing back? So talk about that zoning again, and would, would, should we anticipate more of, of this kind of appeals coming down for us to take a look at?
I do not anticipate more of these. Um, we may have a few, but as I mentioned, most of the applicants that have come into our department over the last four months, because that's been about how long since you've adopted the short-term rental regulations, 95% of them, the owners are out of town. And they have property managers that are here, live and work here, but the owners aren't here. So this is a very different situation, and it seems appropriate to evaluate the possibility of a fee commensurate with the anticipated use of this facility.
So I'm ready to make a motion if you are...
Um, I, I have just one area that I'd like to weigh in on. First of all, I do agree with you on the case-by-case basis. I think there are unique situations that come up, and we should be evaluating those as they do. I, I'm always worried about protecting the county from litigation, potential litigation, and, and always trying to be fair and equal in how we make decisions. And I just, I, I wonder about, um, you know, other folks that own short-term rentals that are paying fees and how they might feel about adjusting one party's fees for, against their own. And I, I know the, the legal standard in that, I believe, is compelling interest. And so my question would be for council, have we met that threshold? What are your thoughts on this? And, and I'd just like council to weigh in on that.
I would, I don't see a compelling interest for the county. I mean, it's a short-term rental. I think there, there may be some sort of an argument for a compelling interest if we're talking about the, I, the part that I heard was, was that this fourplex is integral to their business and, and allowing it to work effectively and efficiently. I think that, um, I don't think that there's an argument for giving special consideration for people who are, um, who are local as opposed to not local. That's not, that's, I think that, I think that even bringing that up begs litigation, so, because it's unequal treatment. So I think, I think the strongest argument that you could make would be, would be that, that, well, there are two. First of all, this thing's been in business for, since prior to the, since prior to the, uh, inst, uh, to the new regulations requiring these fees, and it's an ongoing part of their business. So I think, I, I almost think that while there might not be a compelling interest, it's, it's, it is commensurate with a taking to, to come in and, and, and weigh in with pretty hefty fees for an ongoing business that's already in place. So I think that would be the strongest argument as far as I would, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. When, when did the, when did the business start, sir? When, when did your...
We, uh, we first started renting a small apartment in, toward the end of February of '21.
Okay.
And then, like I say, since we've had, uh, you know, some, some situations where we've had people in there for longer than, than not because of situation, you know, our own son, uh, ourselves.
Right.
And I want to say, you know, another thing that is going to protect the county against people having these things and running a complete, uh, a place that the county would be embarrassed that people are coming and relating that to Gold Beach or Curry County is that, you know, we, from the very first qualifying date, we've been super hosts, you know? So, and that's because we take care of it. For the longest time, we cleaned it ourselves. We did everything ourselves. And now we have some people that are, are helping us with that, but, but we take a lot of pride in being able to make people fall in love with Gold Beach, you know, because of what they have and what they can experience here. And, you know, that, all of that reflects on the, the unit they're staying in, too, so...
Okay. Commissioner Herzog, any, any further discussion?
Well, I really appreciate it, Mr. Workman's request, um, and Becky's affirmation that it falls within her guidelines of the, of the variance that would be adopted by us. So, um, I would like when I agree with Becky. So, um, I'm ready to raise a vote or make a motion, Mr. Chair, whenever that's ready to go.
All right.
I have a, I have another comment to make, so...
Go ahead, Becky.
Thank you. The one thing that I, I haven't impressed upon enough, and Commissioner Boyce, I think this was your question that I, maybe I didn't answer, is this particular facility has acted both as a short-term and a long-term rental facility. And to me, that's the most compelling reason for a reduction in rate. I'm a little nervous about legal counsel's statement about it was already in operation, therefore... Yeah, that's, that makes me a little nervous. But the compelling reason really is the tie to the community, the opportunity and the willingness of this particular applicant to look at long-term rental needs for people that are coming into the community trying to work as well as meeting his financial obligations by allowing the short-term rental opportunity.
So one thing about the, regarding the compelling interest, her point as well...
So one thing about the, regarding the compelling interest, her point is well-taken regarding at least the long-term rental, because we also have a, you know, since we do have a housing crisis here, and that, any way that you can take steps to address that would be, would be legitimate.
Right, and I think Mr. Workman was clear in articulating that it was being used as both, and I, and I'm definitely taking that into consideration and appreciate that information. That's extremely important to me.
And the investment of four bathrooms and four kitchens, that's no small thing.
No.
The expense of that.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to request, to approve the request of the reduction fee of the short-term rental in nine four one three nine Doyle Point Road.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And, yes, so that's a unanimous vote. All right. So we'll move on to six B then, before we do our presentation, and that would be me. And that is on our, on our IT issues. And I put this on the agenda because this came out of the managers' meeting, which we had on the twenty-fourth, where we had a discussion with our department heads regarding our current IT services with Kuzcure Electric. And during that, we heard our department heads discuss some of the problems that we've had with the open tickets, with the, the service being provided being inadequate and the subsequent consequences of that. That was very concerning to me. What was most concerning is that, that it's an issue that is impacting the effectiveness, the timeliness, and our employees' ability to get their work done. So another factor was also the cost, and we spent one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars last year. We've got seventy-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars put towards it this year, so we're on track to spend even more money. And, and I also learned during that meeting that that contract, there is a contract in place, but it's not signed, so I wonder about the, the actual legality of that contract and, and so on. So I'd like to have some discussion about it, and I'd like to take some action on this. You know, we've, we, I, I think, first of all, we need to iron out the, the problems that we're having with the IT service we're receiving. I wanna make sure our department heads have the tools they need to do their, their jobs. So I would, I would really like to have council enter into some conversations with Kuzcure Electric. And I think we should also, based on the costs that we're paying, really explore whether or not we can get somebody here as our own internal IT person for the amount of money we're paying. So I'd like to have that conversation. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Yeah, I remember when Kuzcure came to the rescue just before I got here, six years ago, and there was actually a concern that, because of the breakdown with the loss of our, our own department, that the jail doors wouldn't open, you know? So it was, it was a major rescue by Kuzcure. However, I'm not indifferent at all to your concern that it's very expensive. It's very expensive. Do we love those guys and their work? Absolutely.
Sure.
Do we appreciate their steadfastness? But, you know, in the, in the issue, the, the costs are going up, and we are, you know, hurting for revenue continually. We have to look at every dime we spend, so I'm glad you addressed this. I think the timing is good. Obviously, I think it's important. I don't wanna offend them in, in any way, but...
No, this is business.
And, and I, and I recognize that that's also your, your, your approach, but it is time to address this, and maybe, maybe it's, it could possibly be a simple matter, would we go to the executive management of Kuzcure and say, hey, we need a ten thousand or twenty thousand dollar discount, or, or, you know, we did have a discussion about two years ago, Vice Chair Alcorn, that instead of often calling directly or emailing directly to the, the staff at IT, that we could go to a, a go-to person in our office and say, hey, you're, you're capable of figuring this out, this is over my, over my capacities, and could you help us? And so that's, I think that we've done some of that, but I wasn't aware of department heads being concerned that there's, there's actually more of a breakdown than what I realized. So you might wanna shed a little more light on that if you can, or maybe, maybe in future discussions. Either way, we'd be fine with me.
Okay. Commissioner Herzog?
I think, like, you got, you're on the right track. I think you and Ted, if you're the ladies on to the IT department, you and Ted reach out, meet with Brad Bishop with Kuzcure Electric, Dan Springer, and we'll talk about it next meeting, maybe. I think that's the correct way to go. We have an agreement with them. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Well, we got some really good input from department heads at the managers' meeting. And the, one of the, one of the big complaints was the open tickets and, and also not understanding, having a clear, concise feeling of, you know, what we're being charged for and how much it's costing, and then seeing an actual breakdown of those costs. And then I think if we have that from them and we, we have that discussion with them, we can, you know, we can probably negotiate on that. And then we can make a more informed decision if we wanna try to hire somebody from the outside. I think that would be helpful. So maybe, maybe a motion would be in order to have council begin negotiating that, a more effective and working contract with them at this time.
Could you be in on that? Could both of you be in on those?
Of course. Of course.
Okay, good. That would, that would be in our best interest, in my opinion.
Okay.
We have a meeting scheduled with Kuzcure Electric at one-thirty on the ninth of February about this.
Good. Okay.
Very good.
So do we all, can we all agree on that motion? Or I guess I would need a second on that question.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion passes, three zero. All right. Let's see, we have moved, so we're gonna go to the...
Now we're back to the presentation.
We wanna go, no, we've got one more, because we have done an agenda item. So we're gonna, we're gonna address the Suicide Awareness Prevention Council appointments now, and we had a change to that this morning.
We had an addition of Janice Payne.
Janice.
Janice is, as a, as an additional member, and each one of you had your, had the, her application in your boxes on your doors.
Right, and I have that in front of me, and, and I have reviewed it, and so we have, these are basically two applicants in two different positions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Herzog?
I have none, Chair.
All right, I would entertain.
I would only add, they are both very, I wanna assure you, very good applicants and very experienced.
Sure. I, I reviewed the, reviewed the application, and it was very good. I think I've heard them speak before, too. So I would entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept both Janice Payne and Lauren Farmer to sit in on the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Committee.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
And yes, so that passes three to zero. Now we will continue on to our, our presentation. Susie?
Wonderful, thank you. Let's see.
Hang on.
Darn it, I thought this was gonna be the barn burner here today.
You never know.
No, my expectations aren't that high. Well, thanks for having me today. So as I mentioned, I'm just here not for you to take any action today, but just to give you a preview of a, of a plan, a report, that will come before you on February fifteenth for adoption. This is a plan that Curry County Public Transportation Service District needs to apply for their kind of biannual grant funding. And so our, our plan kind of looks, as I mentioned, both short-term and long-term, and I'm gonna be here to give you a little bit of an overview of it. Do you have a screen in front of you that you're seeing this as well, or you just look at this big one?
We're looking at the big screen.
Okay. Oh, I see, there's another one there. There we go. That makes sense. So the transit development plan, as I mentioned, it kind of looks both short-term and long-term to provide Curry Public Transit Service District and Curry Public Transit, Inc., guidance on what they should be working on in the near term. And it addresses things like service, so like where the bus should go and how frequently. It also looks at what are the needs for bus stops and facilities, as well as looks at coordination needs with other providers and other agencies. We've been working on the project since late twenty-twenty-one, so it's been about kind of a twelve-to-fifteen-month process to really develop the plan and then kind of move into the adoption phase. We've been working with an advisory committee, oops, excuse me, we've been working with an advisory committee and met with them about five times over this process, kind of at each stage of the process, to talk about the existing conditions, the needs, the opportunities we see, kind of which ones we should identify in the plan for the short-term, midterm, long-term, and so forth. The plan is laid out pretty traditional format with a section on vision and goals, and then providing an overview of the baseline condition, the needs, the future opportunities, and then the plan itself. This plan is kind of consolidating two plans. The county previously actually only had what's called a coordinated transportation plan. It's a coordinated plan for transportation and human services. It was really pretty focused on transit services for seniors and people with disabilities, whereas this plan is a little bit more comprehensive to all services. The county previously didn't have more of a fixed route transit development plan, so in doing this update, we've kind of combined, are consolidating, kind of providing a transit development plan and consolidating it with the coordinated transportation plan that exists The, in the introduction section, it gives a little bit of an overview of the process that we went through. As I mentioned, we worked with an advisory committee and met with them over five times. We also have a project website. We did an online open house, some online surveys, and I think more significantly, we did two rounds of onboard surveys, so surveying riders to really hear from them and what their needs and priorities are. And we also interviewed and surveyed operators, because they have a lot of great insights on what the, the needs are and what the pain points are, what would really kind of, you know, what minor modifications would really make large improvements. We also had focus group meetings. So we went to pretty great efforts to try to get a range of input into this, into this project. The goals of Curry Public Transit and that this plan is trying to help realize is, you know, for Curry Public Transit to continue to be, provide very customer-focused services that are safe and comfortable and convenient for all riders, that we're increasing accessibility and connectivity for people to be able to get places throughout the county as well as outside of the county, that we're coordinating with all, all types of partners, other transit agencies and service providers, and really thinking about the health and sustainability of, of the community as well as the ability to sustain services. In the baseline conditions section, we're really not only looking at, when you're planning for transit, it's not just about, you know, Curry Public Transit Services. We're really looking at, well, both their Coastal Express service as well as their dialeride services, but then thinking about the coordination with the other regional providers such as Amtrak, Redwood Coast Transit, Coos County Area Transit, Pacific Crest Lines, Southwest Point. So really, how does Curry Public Transit integrate and how do riders kind of more seamlessly, seamlessly be able to access these other providers that help get them more places? We're also looking at client-based and medical transportation as well, kind of more as part of that human services side of the plan. And I realize you might, this looks, you're pretty, I'm assuming you're pretty familiar with the services. I'm sorry you can't read this map at this quality. Just kind of highlighting that Curry Public Transit does extend outside of the county as kind of the provider that is connecting to the other counties. So Curry Public Transit goes pretty deep into Coos County to connect into Coos Bay North Bend, where more services are available to help get folks into the valley and, and further, further north. And then they also extend all the way down into Smith River in California, which also then provides additional opportunities to get into the valley. So as we were looking at needs for the plan, we kind of have, generate ideas and needs and projects based on three key sources of information. So one, we look at the goals and objectives of the system, what are we trying to achieve? And so what's needed to get there? What are the gaps? We are looking at population and demographic and land use forecasts to be thinking about how are the, the people that we need to serve, excuse me, changing? And then a lot of stakeholder and community input, which I can't stress enough, is just really such a, a key component on this type of a plan, because we're, you know, really in the business of serving people who frequently don't have a lot of other options. We, kind of taking a look at growth, I mean, Curry County is, as you all probably know, is relatively, has relatively slow growth, both in the recent past as well as projected into the future. But the growth that we are seeing, and the red is really kind of in that timeframe over the next forty years, you know, we're seeing continued slow growth rates, under one percent a year, really more closely, close to half a percent per year, but that the growth that will be occurring is projected to be happening within the urban growth boundaries of, you know, Brookings, Gold Beach, and Port Orford, and, and kind of a little bit potentially a shrinking of the population in the unincorporated areas. As we went through, kind of looking at the goals and objectives, kind of demographic and land use changes, as well as all the outreach to, to riders and community members, I've got, these next two slides give a little bit of a summary of the needs that we heard from, that we identified through that process. You know, we have a, some of the operational needs are to make sure that we're, you know, continuing to provide service improvements for Title VI populations. We are hearing and seeing the need for additional hours per day and number of trips per day for the Coastal Express, which is what operates from, basically from Coos Bay to Smith River several times a day. We are seeing needs in the future for a circulator, like more of a shuttle bus operating on a set route in Brookings. The expansion of dialeride into Port Orford, so currently there's dialeride in Brookings and Gold Beach, but not Port Orford, although it's, actually, that's an improvement that is funded. It's really more of a driver constraint at this point. I was confirming there with Kathy. We see a need to help kind of expand and coordinate dialeride services that are, that are operating in Gold Beach and Brookings to, instead of more point-to-point, look at those opportunities to help bring folks to the Coastal Express. See a need for additional integration with Redwood Coast Transit, more coordination with healthcare organizations and Medicare and, you know, Medicaid appointments. So there's always, when you're looking out in the future, always a long list of things that we, we know could and should do to continue to serve people better, but I don't wanna make it sound like Curry Public Transit is not already doing a really fantastic job because, given the, the resources. And doing a lot of peer reviews and comparing to other, other similar counties with similar geographies, I mean, with what, with what they have to operate with, they really are doing a managing job and providing, meeting a lot of really important needs. Some additional longer-term needs that we identified rather on the service side, but more on some of the development and capital side. You know, things related to increasing accessibility for the bus stops. This is something that can coordinate a little bit with the county's transportation system plan, which is also a long-range plan that's ongoing currently with the county. So there will be some integration of the needs that we've seen and identified for enhancing stop access for people walking and biking to get to the bus stops. So we'll be coordinating with that planning process. I'm gonna jump ahead here to give you a more of an overview of what is in the plan chapter, kind of what, what is being adopted as far as the recommendations. The plan includes a vision for the transit service, identifies some of the capital needs, includes a management and marketing plan, has a financial plan, and an implementation plan. has a financial plan, and an implementation plan, and some recommended code and policy amendments that would not be anything that you would be adopting as part of this, but they are just recommendations for Kathy and for ODOT to be, over the long term, working, working with the county and the cities on updates to their development code over time, where there's opportunities to make, to ensure that future development is a little bit more considering transit access. So, the plan, the vision. Really, the vision is to provide kind of sustainable and innovative transit system in a county that is serving both urban and rural users. I'm going to jump into the meat of what are the specific short-term recommendations that are in the plan. And these short-term recommendations are very in alignment with the STIF plan, the statewide, statewide transportation improvement fund plan and grant applications that Catherine will be talking to you about. So we, as we were updating the short-term list, it was informing kind of the grant application process for the STIF funds. And one criteria for those STIF funds is that the projects be an adopted plan. So just the way the timing is working out for that STIF program, and we're kind of bringing both forward to you at the same time, kind of approval of those grant applications and the adoption of the plan to be able to demonstrate to ODOT that the projects are a part of an adopted plan. So the short-term recommendations are Dial-A-Ride, adding Dial-A-Ride service in Port Orford. And actually, that's a project that was funded the last biennium, but has had a driver constraint issue with getting it implemented. Coordination with, of Dial-A-Ride with the Coastal Express. So it's just a slight maybe tweak in kind of how the Dial-A-Ride is operating, not necessarily having a cost impact. Inner-county service coordination. So we're really working more closely with Coos County and Redwood Coast Transit on the stop locations, the time transfers, to really make sure that we're facilitating passengers getting to where they need to go once they get to those neighboring counties. Formalizing the Langloy Public Library Stop, focusing on staff capacity and transition planning for Catherine, as the current manager of Curry Public Transit, and a focus on marketing and advertising. So many of these being on the lower cost, more cost-constrained kind of part of the plan. In the long term, so items that are really not currently in a financially constrained plan, but are that next tier of needs, if additional funding were available, we would recommend a Brookings Circulator, so more of a shuttle bus operating on a fixed schedule with stop locations around Brookings to help people get around town more, as well as be able to collect more people to access the Coastal Express. Adding additional runs per day to the Coastal Express. Providing additional upgrades to bus shelters to make them more weather-resistant and provide a better user experience. And Redwood Coast Transit coordination, although this is the latest draft. We have moved this up into the short term as we've had some really great interaction with their manager, who's ready to, in the short term, maybe possibly make some changes to their routes so that riders, when they get to Smith River, don't have, they would transfer in Smith River, but instead of taking a Redwood Coast Transit bus to their transit center and then transferring in order to get to Walmart, to get to the Social Security and the hospital, they would be able to get directly to those locations from Smith River. So that's one of the really key coordination items that I think is a good outcome of this planning, planning process. And then, thinking very long term, you know, the next step could be a potential Circulator in Gold Beach and stop improvements at the Community College. I did mention already that we did a good look at transit, transit stop accessibility needs. These, some of these are outside of the county, but those that are in the county, we've got some pretty specific recommendations. And we'll be working with kind of county staff on their transportation system plan to look at if any of those improvements should, can be added into the county's transportation plan because Curry Public Transit really has no control over kind of the sidewalks in the public right-of-way. The short-term recommendations represent about $150,000 a year increase in the budget. However, that, that we are anticipating to be covered by increases in the state's, in the state's transit funding program that Curry Public Transit has access to. So although, you know, costs are rising everywhere, the sustainability of, you know, is a legitimate question, you know, how, how, in the long term, how sustainable are the current services and short-term services? But at this point in time, the short-term recommendations we're seeing is being in the cost-constrained plan. But as we get to the midterm and long term, those are unfunded parts of the plan. But as I talked about, some of those increases in services, these are kind of additional, in today's dollars, additional amounts to kind of do those additional service increases. We were also looking at the, the needs for the actual fleet. And the fleet does need to be replaced over time. As we looked at the need to replace fleet vehicles as they kind of age out of service, as well as add vehicles as you're trying to increase the amount of service being provided. The plan recommends an annual budget item of $195,000 to really help support the local, the local match for the fleet vehicle, fleet replacement over time. For example, a few years ago, I think Curry Public Transit spent about $500,000 on match for several buses at the same time. So trying to get that more in the, in an annual budget, while vehicles may continue to be replaced in batches, it's good to kind of get that, but annual set aside. Essentially, yeah, budgeted annually. As we, we took a good look at existing funding sources being used by Curry Public Transit, as well as opportunities for local funding that might not be used, being utilized. As an illustrative activity, we looked at, you know, what, as many public transit districts are funded through payroll taxes or through property taxes. We did some illustrative looks at what fairly low rates of those types of funding could provide in the county. So this dashed green and dashed black line is kind of our projections at the 90% and 110% of all the existing funding sources. We do expect the existing funding sources to continue to, to increase as overall the funding sources increase from the federal government, from this, the payroll tax that's currently funding transit statewide. So there will be some increases in the amount of funding available, but it's kind of, you know, projected to be slow and steady. This light blue additional line is what we would project could be generated through a two cents per thousand property tax, just as an illustration, which is on the kind of lower end of what many transit districts have for local funding. The red is more of a employer payroll tax, and I'm not suggesting that you would do both of these. The state's transit fund is currently funded through a employee-based payroll tax. And so this red represents what if there was a complimentary employer-based payroll tax at the same rate? We compared these potential additional funding options to the short term and midterm. You know, and essentially, the yellow area kind of represents increasing costs for, of sustaining the existing services. The pink is the additional costs of, no, excuse me. The red bar is kind of that additional cost of the short-term recommendations. The brown is the medium-term recommendations, and the blue is the long-term recommendations. So we are seeing, as you forecast out, another five years or so, there could be the need for additional funding to sustain current services. But to get into the medium and long-term services, the county would definitely need to be exploring additional funding sources. And so we're really just providing that as, in the plan as a point of kind of information. The short-term recommendations are really focused on those no-cost and low-cost projects and things that we are anticipating to be fundable over the next few years through the state's transfer, transit fund. And those kind of short-term recommendations, including the Port Orford Dial-A-Ride, just additional coordination activities, some capital improvements to the Langloy Stop, and just kind of additional funding on marketing and advertising. So we, we have an online open house that is ongoing currently just to really make sure that there is an additional online opportunity for folks to review the plan. We, and the plan is to bring the plan back to you on February 15th for adoption. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioner Herzog, any questions?
Sorry, no, sir.
All right, Commissioner Boyce.
No, but thank you very much. Excellent.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I have shared a electronic copy of the plan with Chair Herzog. And so I'm hoping that you, I don't know if you have access to it already or not, but you'll have, hoping you'll have ample time to take a peek at it. If you have additional questions in advance of the 15th, then you can feel free to reach out to Catherine. And we'll make sure, any questions or comments you have can be reflected for your packet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're up? You are up.
Actually, I'm, I'm not as fancy. I'm going to hand you some paper stuff. Don't know how many copies of this you need.
Don't you leave me out.
Thank you.
So every two years, we apply for our BIENNium grants, and these are what we live and die by. They're all funded through state funds, which is funded through federal funds. And what I need from you today is an approval of these. I do have copies of the actual grant requests, and I'll leave them here for your records. But I didn't make one for everybody because they're about 40 pages. So as you know, Curry Public Transit, Inc. is a vendor to the county and to the district. But we kind of act in the feet of the district in that we do all of the work that the district would normally do in order to run a transit in the county. And as she touched on, we, we have a pretty good service. We run a Coastal Express for 140 miles up and down Highway 101 three times a day. And we just started back on doing Saturdays, and now it's six days a week. Yay. And we run, run a Dial-A-Ride, which is an on-demand call-in service in the cities of Brookings and Gold Beach, and we're expanding to Port Orford. We have had funding to expand our services in Gold Beach and Port Orford, but we ran into a problem with lack of drivers, lack of qualifications, and COVID. So we're hoping to get that started this spring. So by this spring, you'll be seeing a bus in Port Orford if we can find a driver, which I'm very excited about. So this BIENNium, we're applying for three different grants. One is called 5310s, 5310, and that actually funds the Dial-A-Ride operations. It's given to us at a 10.27% local match, and Curry Public Transit provides that match. They allocated us for two years, 221,424, but they ask us to ask on the grant 20% more in case funding came in. That way, they didn't have to rewrite the grant. So what we're asking for in the grant is 260, 217, 260,000, 217. Our anticipated match for that is 29,783, and the total ask was 290,000, and that's for a two-year period for the Dial-A-Ride. The 5310 funds basically fund the Coastal Express operations, our general operations, and our administrative operations. And that's split into three different funds. The first one is the administration, which covers my staff's cost in administrating all of these grants. That's available at a 10.27% match. The allocated amount is 120,179. We asked for 143,568. The match on that is 16,432 for a total of 160,000. Then there's a new match or a new fund called prohibitive maintenance. And that, for us, is critical because, as you know, we have not been able to get buses for two years. The bus production went nowhere for two years. We originally asked on a grant that's 21, 2021, for six additional buses, or seven additional buses. And because of the cost increase over the years, we've had to reduce that to five, which means that we have a very aging fleet. We just put $10,000 into a transmission last week, and we anticipated another $10,000 expense. So to be given the opportunity to have part of our funding cover prohibitive maintenance at a much lower match rate is ideal. So that's a 10.27% match. We're asking for 131,409, I'm sorry, 131,409 is what's available. We're asking for 157,028 with a match of 17,972, for a total of 175,000. The big one is the operations grant, and unfortunately, that's a huge match rate. We have to come up with 43.92% of the funds. So what's available to us is 445,910. And again, that 20% ask is 532,760. We have to provide 417,240. Most of that match is coming from the STIF funds because we can use the state funds as a match for the federal funds. So the total ask is 950,000. Under STIF, on the second page here, this one that looks like this, STIF is state-funded payroll tax. And we are allocated a certain amount each year, but it's always an estimate because they never know exactly how much we're going to get. So they're, they're anticipating about 253,962 under regular STIF funds. And this year, they've, they've incorporated the State Transportation Fund into the STIF, which funds elderly and disabled services. And that's at 67,700. So combined, that's what we get for the, the ask. The projects we're doing, are we going to continue the Coastal Saturday Express on, expanding the hours by one hour a day and then adding Saturdays? We're going to continue the Saturday Brookings Dial-A-Ride and expand that one hour a day and hire a second dispatcher to cover that. We're also asking to expand the Gold Beach Dial-A-Ride to five days a week from four and expand the hours from nine to three, or nine to two, to nine to four, and hire one part-time driver. And we're going to add the Port Orford Dial-A-Ride one day a week, running from 10 to 3, and have the driver that we hire at Port Orford or at the Gold Beach take the Port Orford route, too. So they'll share a route. The third project is to continue our advertising. We found that our marketing program's been very effective. We're no longer the best-kept secret in Curry County. People actually know who we are. And we want to continue the employee retention program. During COVID, we gave our employees a COVID bonus of 20% to stay on the job, and it worked. We didn't lose anybody. Well, I'm sorry, we did. We lost two people to COVID. They actually passed away. But nobody quit. So we don't want to take away that 20% increase in pay just because COVID's over, because I will guarantee we'll lose people. So we're asking to continue that employee retention program. And then we have some money left over that we didn't spend over the last two years, and we're going to put that into bus purchases. So those are the allocations to the STIF plan. The third page I gave you is kind of a recap of all of the grants that we have and how they, they break out by month and year. So any questions?
No questions for me. You guys do an awesome job, that's for sure, and meet the needs of the community. Commissioner Herzog, any comments or questions?
I just want to echo that, Brad. Kathy has just been a joy to work with. Susan's presentation was great. Just for, you know, being the lady on for two years to Kathy, I decided last week that maybe I should ride one of these buses. So I walked down to the bus stop there by the pound in Brookings and rode the bus in the morning, and the same driver picked me up that afternoon, and the buses were clean, and there's another lady on there that does this every day. She rides from Brookings to Corner Drive, works all day in Corner Drive, and then takes her ride home. But it's a huge valuable service that is offered, and Kathy has just done a fantastic job with her staff. I got to miss the bus runner. It was actually a gal. I went to high school with, and so it was a pleasure and a commendor for the job she's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
So we just want to make a decision today to approve the grant application, correct?
Yes, and I have copies of the application, which I'll...
And we have that, I think, but that'd be great. Thank you. So this should have been an action item, maybe, if we're gonna approve this. Not a big deal, but...
Well...
We can move it to an action item.
If you want to, do you want a motion, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. So you ready? Yeah, I move, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, that we approve the Curry County Public Transit Service District statewide transportation improvement fund grant application.
And I will second that. And Commissioner Herzog, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that passes three to zero. Thank you.
We also need one for the 5310 and 5311 applications.
All right. I'll entertain motions on those.
So move, Mr. Chair?
I'll move.
All right.
Second here.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that passes.
Thank you so much. A great pleasure doing business with you. We'll see you on the 15th.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, too. Appreciate it. So now we'll move on to Commissioner Updates. Oh, consent, where are we at?
We, yeah, we...
Do we do the...
We didn't do the consent agenda yet.
We did not. That's right. We skipped it.
Job, JJ.
Very good job, JJ. I thought we did that. Okay. I thought we did the consent agenda.
Now we just have to come back and approve it, don't we?
We pulled the Suicide Awareness Provincial Council off it, but you did not amend a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain...
So move, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, and yes. That passes three to zero. Now Commissioner Updates.
Hey, I think we can do this and get JJ out of here in just a few minutes for break. Three things, Mr. Vice Chair and Chair Herzog. I just want to keep a little pressure up. The first meeting that you had, we discussed the repeal of Measure 110 and how we might approach the state on that, and then the sheriff come out with a very good summary of what they've been dealing with. He was somewhat speaking for all law enforcement in Curry County, which I appreciated. So that's one thing. The second thing, I had given the board a request to repeal the governor's executive orders, just for future education. I mean, it goes without saying that generally speaking, any executive order that Governor Kotek imposes on the citizens of Oregon is probably not going to be in the best interest of Curry County. So I just want to encourage the board to be on the lookout there and be prepared for that. And I had one that, I wrote a letter that I wanted the board to approve, but we didn't get that done, and so I'm just gonna send it out individually. Not a huge thing. An advisory council, I'm recommending the board consider for the RV camping, random camping all over the county, abandoned, burned out, river bar camping. Commissioner Herzog has shed a little light on this in the past, and we have several citizens that have been concerned. We had RVs get flooded out in the High Water December 11th, the Lobster Creek Bar. So those are just a couple of things that I want to just keep the board encouraged to follow and see if we want to take any action down the road. And finally, Vice Chair Alcorn, I want to read an immediate release, press release, from Douglas County. It says, "Commissioner Boyce asks to testify in Oregon House Bill 2253." Now that's, or excuse me, Douglas County Commissioner Chris Boyce. It'll just take me maybe one or two minutes to read the primary emphasis on this, and I think it's very much in the interest of Curry County, our citizens, legal marijuana growers, all the above. Oh, and here, I meant to give you a copy of that, and I'll put one on Commissioner Herzog's office there. Recently, Douglas County Commissioner Chris Boyce was honored to be selected to testify before the Oregon State Legislature's House Committee on Agriculture, Land Use, Natural Resources, and Water regarding House Bill 2253 relating to farm-use land used for illegal growing of crops prescribing an effective date. The bill's summary states disqualifies land from farm use special assessments upon final civil penalty or judgment of conviction for the illegal growing of crops against landowner or person in possession and control of land. Provides exception for landowner or other obligated taxpayer who reasonably lack knowledge of any illegal growing of crops or promptly notified law enforcement agencies of illegal growing of crops. On Thursday, January 19th, 2023, Commissioner Chris Boyce joined the Honorable Senator David Brock Smith, Oregon Senate District 1, and Scott Winkles from the League of Oregon Cities to testify as witnesses in a public hearing for the House Committee on Agriculture, Land Use, Natural Resources, and Water. Remember that committee there. It's a very important committee. That is chaired by Representative Ken Helm from Oregon House District 27. Both Senator Brock Smith and Commissioner Boyce discussed the negative impact and significant amount of resources deployed to combat illegal marijuana crops in Douglas County. Winkle spoke in support of House Bill 2253's intent to penalize landowners who knowingly allow illegal cannabis to be grown on their property by revoking their agricultural tax exemption status for up to five years, which, of course, is a much cheaper tax rate. Final paragraph, according to Senator David Brock Smith, House Bill 2253 was written with valuable input from Oregon Farm Bureau, the Oregon Seed Council, and the Oregon State Association of County Assessors in order to quantify the serious consequences for landowners that knowingly engage in growing illegal cannabis. That's really all I need to add. Board, just, I would encourage anybody that hears this and is interested to write that committee. Hopefully, we can get it out of committee and on its way to being approved by the House, then to the Senate, and then the question would be would the governor sign it. But the illegal grows, there's just one statistic here I probably should add. Anyway, their amount of illegal grow investigations has doubled in one year. And so, and Douglas County is very, very well organized, and of course, you're familiar with this, Commissioner Alcorn, their, the DENT program counties, the Douglas County's inter-agency narcotics team. So, boy, it's really catching up with them there, and you're aware of what's going on here and what we're up against. Thank you, Mr. Alcorn.
Commissioner Herzog, any comments?
No, I just apologize. I couldn't make it today. I'll see you next week for sure.
Okay. So I have two things, and the first one is positive, and I want to share it. I want to acknowledge our own Becky Crockett. She was instrumental in House Bill 2203, getting that forwarded, along with then-representative, I believe, David Brock Smith, who's a senator.
Same committee, by the way.
Yes, and that was in the Capital Press, in the newspaper, that Becky's work was highlighted there, and that has to do with allowing farmers to temporarily park their RVs near machinery during vulnerable times because of the theft and other problems that they've been having. And I just want to, I just want to acknowledge Becky's work in that and the impact that she had on that.
We're hoping that gets passed, too.
Yep, we are. So the other thing I want to address, and which is kind of along the lines that you brought up, it's Measure 110. Measure 110 is failing Curry County. It is absolutely failing Curry County. And I saw the sheriff's information that he shared with us, you know, on the Class E violations, there were 3,084 convictions. 82% of those people failed to appear. 82%.
Could you give that number, would you mind giving that number again? Is that just a Curry County number?
No, that is, that is a state number. 3,084 with convictions, 82%, 2,584 failed to appear. 317 with all Class E violation charges were dismissed, dismissed, and 8% of those, so 31 of those, 31 of those had substance use assessment verification filed. And 25 juvenile cases in there. Methamphetamine were 64% of the violations, heroin were 16% of the violations. 233 or 6% were issued to non-Oregon residents. And I'm looking at some of the county stats here as well. Measure 110 is failing the citizens of Curry County. And it's impacting our upward trends of crime. It's impacting, it's impacting public safety in an extremely negative way, and it is, it is one of the issues that we need to deal with in our, in our community. Yeah, and obviously, we have homeless issues. We have housing issues that we are all working very hard to, to combat. But we have the Measure 110 and the impacts that this is having on our community, and we have another issue that is directly related and correlated to this, and that is fentanyl. And I want to talk about fentanyl for a minute, because we had another fatal overdose in Brookings just a few days ago. And there is a difference between fentanyl, meth, and heroin and cocaine. Fentanyl kills people, and fentanyl is an extremely dangerous substance, and we have zero resources here that are being provided to our law enforcement departments, zero that are being afforded to us, to combat the trafficking and distribution of fentanyl in Curry County. And that has to change. It is unacceptable. And if you're one of the families that have been impacted by fentanyl, I want you to know that this is unacceptable, and I'm working very hard to make a difference in this. And what I've done is, in fact, I had a conversation with Senator Merkley's staff last night about this particular issue. I will have more conversations with him and his staff. I have had conversations with Senator David Brock Smith, and I have reached out to my contacts in federal law enforcement agencies. And we are going to combat this. I will find a way to bring those resources here and make sure that our law enforcement has what they need. We need, we need funding. We really need a task force, is what we need.
Yes.
We need funding. We need technological resources, pole cameras, trackers, and we need some, some very experienced investigators to come and help with this problem. And I'm making those requests, and I'm actively trying to work through this problem and make sure that Curry County has not forgotten on this issue. And I want both of you to be aware of that and the community as well.
So can we discuss just a little bit?
Sure.
You're probably aware of a sheriff, I think somewhere around San Francisco, and maybe we don't want to dig deep into that part today, but he was just talking about the cartels that were in California, and of course, they're moving north, and so, or you have to assume that they're moving north and maybe already here. We don't...
They are here.
And so, at what, at what point do we want to, you know, educate the public on what we're up against and combating that? And, you know, just, just to hear you acknowledge, you know, the difference between fentanyl versus cocaine, methamphetamine, et cetera. I mean, that's, I mean, people need to know that, I think, and that might be part of the discussion and the work that you're doing.
Well, Wendy Ling has some funding for that, and she is communicating with the Sheriff's Department. In fact, there were some emails exchanged on that yesterday with Captain McDonald and her, and they are working on some strategies to help with education on that. But, but we need some accountability with those who are trafficking fentanyl, those who are selling fentanyl, those who are providing fentanyl to the people in this community. We need, we need some accountability with that, and we need some help. We need, we need our state leaders to, to help us with that, and I'm actively holding them to the fire on that.
Good.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Mr. Herzog?
No, sir. I just, I agree that if we have to have stricter laws and enforce them, you can't get a ticket and not show up and be okay. It's never wrong to do the right thing. The right thing is to have stricter enforcement and laws to combat this, and it was a goof-up way back and continuing to be, and it's just a travesty to Oregon and everybody involved.
You know, when you have the sterile needle program and you're encouraging drug use, does that not attract drug dealers in any community? I don't care how small, rural, how big.
It sure doesn't help.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll continue the fight. Absolutely.
It's gonna be a long-term battle.
It will be. It will be, but it won't be one that we quit on. So if there's no more comments, no more discussion, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And we, and we will adjourn this meeting. Hope you feel better, John.
You will.